Okay, the Dayton City Commission meeting will now come to order. Please rise for the invocation and remain standing for the place of allegiance. And this morning, the invocation will be given by Commissioner Joseph.
Dear Lord, thank you for your many blessings. Please help us become hopeful servants to those in need. We ask for a servant's heart to serve others humbly and faithfully. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Ms. Blackshear, may I have the roll call, please?
Mayor Mims.
Aye.
Ms. Mayor Joseph.
Aye.
Shaw.
Aye.
Beer Chow.
Aye.
Turner Sloss.
Aye.
Okay. I may have a motion then to approve the minutes from last week's meeting.
So moved, Your Honor.
Second motion, Your Honor.
They probably moved in second to approve the minutes from the December 4th meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Okay, Ms. Blackshear, do we have any communications or petitions?
There are none, Your Honor.
Okay. We have one presentation this morning. I believe we have Ms. Dixie. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, we are going to have a great celebration of some amazing service by the city of Dayton employees. And so, these are our annual Klein Awards. And I will turn it over to where, oh, just came in. These are, these are led by the Dayton Foundation, because that's where the fund is sent, and in honor of Joe Klein. And so, we will hear a little bit more probably about Joe Klein. And I'd like to call forward the gals who are going to lead us in the Klein Awards presentation.
Okay. Have time to catch your breath?
No.
Okay, good morning.
Good morning. I'll take a breath first.
Okay.
I'm Lucy Baker, and I'm the Data Relations Officer at the Dayton Foundation. And here I am, as you said, to present the 2024 Joseph T. Klein Awards with Meredith Klein. This endowed, sorry.
Sorry, give me time.
Okay. I feel like I ran from Oakwood. This endowed memorial award was established in 1984 by Carolyn Klein, the daughter of Joseph T. Klein. Joseph T. Klein treasured his home city of Dayton, and he was an avid supporter who founded, chaired, and volunteered for many of the Gem City's civic organizations. The Klein Fund was established to encourage excellence by city employees regardless of rank or position. As a testament to that, the 2024 recipients range in service years from 2 to 38, and community services also factored into the selection. This year, we received 31 nominations, and the nominees were selected by a committee made up of a city administrator, two previous Klein Award recipients, and a Dayton Foundation representative. That's me. The criteria sets a limit of 10 awards per year, making, thank you.
Take your time. We've got plenty of time.
The committee, committee's selection job was very difficult, but after thought foreview, we present the best of Dayton's best. The award amount varies year after year, and this year, we have $5,401.30 to give. This will be split equally among the 10 recipients, and each will receive $540.13. The work of these 10 honorees represents an amazing 157 total years of service. Thank you so much for your dedication. Joseph Klein's granddaughter, Meredith Klein, will now share some family memories to put the award into perspective.
Okay, thank you.
Hi.
Good morning.
I'm back from Key Largo, the dive capital of the world, to introduce the awards that my aunt set up for her father, my paternal grandfather. This is a handout, you see, of grandpa's, can you hear me okay? "Life is chronicled in his autobiography titled Lucky Joe, the nickname he gave himself, who immigrated from Wales as a scrawny, dirt-poor 14-year-old navigating his way through decades of hard work to thrive in the fields of optometry, finance, and business. Not just luck." Over to me, guys. "You do not make a coat last longer by wearing it more. Why did Orville Wright admonish grandpa during my favorite Dayton dignity encounter Discover grandpa, the civil defense coordinator protecting with bomb squads, landlocked Dayton during World War II. Visit the World War I monument for Dayton's veterans spearheaded by grandpa, who co-established the Home Guard. Did Delco founder Charles F. Cuttering, who owned the largest bank in Dayton, become angry at grandpa when he creatively borrowed advertisement? Find out how grandpa remedied the debilitating headaches suffered for decades by NCR founder John H. Patterson and his habit of destroying eyeglasses during meetings as he pounded his fist on the table for emphasis. Just shy of 50 years old, the age limit in the Navy, grandpa enlisted as, and was promoted from chief petty officer to lieutenant commander in six short weeks, and later to commander. Lucky timing. He was assigned to the Philadelphia's Fourth Naval District Headquarters, responsible for all activities in three states in DC, where ship's service departments served the needs of the men by supplying merchandise and personal services, such as a barber shop, beer parlor, tobacco, and snacks. I was delighted to be assigned to the ADAC in the Aleutian Islands, even though it was known as a godforsaken hellhole, continuously surrounded by dense fog. After 30 days, I was granted five days' leave to return to Dayton. I was preparing my return when I assigned to the most active and important Third Naval District headquartered in New York. It needed cleaning up, and I was told that I was too valuable to be wasted on the unimportant Aleutian outpost. Since men could only be assigned to shore duty for about 10 months, it occurred to me to rely entirely on a force of women. My fellow officers kidded me about heading an all-women organization and referred to me as a ball-bearing wave. You've heard of PG-rated? I've named this Navy Day story "The Conundrum: A Puzzlement," and given it a GPR rating for grandpa risque. One day, a female officer in charge of her ship's service store called me to complain of a supply shortage of brassieres, a very essential item required at a large wave training station. She had placed an order months prior, but had received no shipment. The supplier insisted the order had been filled, shipped, and delivered. I placed a call to the supplier, who informed me he had a receipt, sounds like the Real Housewives on the Bravo TV channel, acknowledging acceptance signed by the Lieutenant Miller. I learned there was no officer by that name in her department, however, there was a supply officer, Miller, the only mayor officer at that activity. My phone call was transferred to him. He insisted he couldn't possibly have the shipment inasmuch as brassieres did not belong in his department. Nevertheless, I insisted he search further. He called me later, and in a spasm of laughter, informed me he had the brassieres. I also had a laughing spell when told he had found them among his stock of chinaware, labeled cup one, cup two, et cetera. Luck and found. Now for the male's essential item. One morning, a young lieutenant reported to my office with orders for training. He had been at sea on a minesweeper for 18 months and had a nervous breakdown. If these sick men showed resentment at the hint of discharge, they were placed under medical observation and while assigned training at the occupation of their choice. I found it best to assign them to try to locate items in short supply by going outdoors and visiting in person local manufacturing plants or distributors. This morning, however, I decided to assign the newly arrived lieutenant to our work-loaded office. He was handed a roster of the ship's services store in the district and instructed to phone the officers who had failed to send the monthly report to my office due by the 10th of the month. It was the 11th, and the report had to be forwarded to DC by the 15th. He was to instruct them in my name and no uncertain language that delays in filing reports would not be tolerated. I need you guys on me. Can you give me it on me? The camera on me?
Yes.
Is it there?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, I don't see it. Oh, good. Okay. Suddenly, loud streaks emerged from the telephone receiver held well out from the lieutenant's ear. I grabbed the extension and learned I had overlooked informing him that he should not call wave activities for chondrum reports. Of course, they wouldn't stock them. It seems the lieutenant had ballooned to the young female officer in a none-too-gentle voice, "Commander Klein wants to know why the H. You have not forwarded a report as to the quantity of rubber sold. You know what I mean? Chondromes." The flustered girl, not knowing how to handle the incident, switched the call to her no-nonsense commanding officer. When I got to the phone, she was yelling at the top of her voice that she would not tolerate Commander Klein's smutty tricks and that she was coming to district headquarters immediately to complain in person to the admiral. It took me some time for her to simmer down. I promised discussing, I proposed discussing the matter during lunch at a very swank and expensive restaurant. She agreed. After she was sated, we were able to laugh over the misunderstanding and became good friends. Luck to have a forgiving, working, funny bone. Grandpa's book and Ann Carroll's digitized radio show, Audio Wheels, including a 1964 interview with Phil Donahue, who share how he spit-sprayed the word "proud" into the face of Pat, the wife of Richard Nixon while on the campaign trail in Dayton, can be found in the free Wright State University Special Collections and Archives, which hold fascinating Dayton history. Grandpa cofounded, there it is, the Dayton chapter of the Optimist Club, whose two primary objectives are adopt optimism as a philosophy of life and promote as an active interest in good government and civic affairs. The Optimist Creed is a promise to oneself, to be so strong that nothing can disturb your peace of mind, to talk health, happiness, and prosperity to every person you meet, to make all your friends, let's see if it's there, nope, okay, feel that there are, uh-oh, that there is something in them, to look at the sunny side of everything and make your optimism come true, to think only of the best, to work only for the best, and expect only the best, to be just as enthusiastic about the success of others as you are about your own, to forget the mistakes of the past and press on to the greater achievements of the future, to wear a cheerful countenance at all times and give every living creature you meet a smile, to give so much time to the improvement of yourself that you have not time to criticize others, to be too large for worry, too noble for anger, too strong for fear, and too happy to permit the presence of troubles. These accolades were once aptly called the top-flight awards. Ann Carroll embraced grandpa's legacy of giving back to the community. The Klein family cherished the sentiment of feeling lucky to live in the dazzling Gem City and would love for tonight's recipients and all to honor these values as you continue to take flight and soar to new heights. You are treasured, and along with my grandmother and dad, we are proud of you. You are treasured, treasured. Congratulations and thank you. Thank you.
Oh, thank you so much.
I have dislocated fingers, so forgive the floppy fish handshake. It's really liquor in it.
And now, for the most important part, we have the 2024 Joseph T. Klein Award recipients. I'll read these off in alphabetical order. And if you could come up and get your certificate from Meredith, and then stay at the front, I believe they want to take a picture, so five and five. Okay? Okay, our first person is William Austin, Garage Supervisor, Department of Public Works, with 35 years of service. He's an environmental scientist, Water Department, four years of service. Next is Kyle Gebhardt, Recreation Program Coordinator, Department of Recreation, with six years of service. Next is Stuart Halfacre, Graphic Designer, Department of Public Affairs, with 29 years Next, we have Emily Holland, Assistant Prosecuting Attorney, Department of Law, two years. Next, Kevin Koontz, Senior Business Manager, Dayton Fire Department, with nine years of Next is Roberta Lowry. She is Financial Services Supervisor, Department of Finance, with 38 years of service. Next, we have Patrick Ledwig, Senior Engineer II, Water Department, two years of service. Kirby Leptin, IT Project Manager, Information Technology, 10 years of service. And our final recipient is Paul Saunders, Police Major, Dayton Department of Police, 22 years of service.
Not my hand. Show the photographer, Sarah, your certificate.
Thank you very much.
Anything else? Presentation? Truly, truly like to say thank you so very much for those years of work that you spend with the city. I really appreciate that. Let's give him a nice round of applause again.
All right. Yes, he did point her way to say it.
They're getting back to work.
Yeah. It's a good sign, right?
Yeah, getting back to work.
That's a good bunch.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, as they're leaving, before we get started back again, I'd just like to say again just how much we appreciate the work that our employees do. So, Ms. Dixie and staff, again, we really, really appreciate the work. And of course, one of the famous things that we'll say, although I think it should be famous across this nation, is the aspect of to give so much time to improving yourself that you don't have time to criticize others. And so, it's something that, I know I try to do the best I can, I'm sure we do appear as well. So, again, thank you so much for your presentation and for the years and years of service for the city of Dayton. Okay, so Ms. Blackshear, do we have any additions, deletions, or comments to the calendar?
I have none, Your Honor.
Okay, Ms. Dixie, any additions, deletions, or comments to the calendar?
Your Honor, this morning, I have no additions or deletions to today's calendar. I do have a number of things I'd like to highlight, starting with item number two, which is a service agreement with Blade Cutters Lawn Service. This is another investment brought to you by the Dayton Recovery Plan. This is, this nearly million-dollar contract is funding for fire pile removal. You've been getting monthly updates with regards to this. There was an RFP done. Two companies were evaluated and scored. Blade Cutters came out on top, and it will remove 35 of our piles at this point. This is a good illustration of how expensive the fire piles are, because they have to be treated as if it's all asbestos. It's nearly $30,000 to remove a pile, and which is compared, it's almost double to what it is in a regular demolition. And it's another reason why, when a fire occurs, if there's a homeowner with insurance, that the city goes through everything possible to hold that property owner and that insurance policy accountable, so that we aren't needlessly spending, funding, general fund or tax dollars on that removal. Item number four is a service agreement with Brumball Construction. This is a contract modification, the, for the West Dayton Police Station facility. This is a manager-at-risk contract, which allows the project to proceed in phases. And then, as phases are designed, identified, and scoped, then authority comes before you, the request for authority comes before you. It is a way to work a little bit faster and design as we go, so that we can get to a completed police station in a shorter time period. This, again, is at the southeast corner of West Third and Abbey Avenue, and this is for the guaranteed maximum price for concrete footers, slab walls, generator package. This is the, you know, work beyond the professional services that we already approved. This is the foundation to get started with the project. A little bit later, in next year, in January, we anticipate bringing forward the guaranteed maximum price agreement for item number three, which will bring the entirety of the project forward for your approval. The item number five is a service agreement with Five Rivers Metro Parks. This is a project that was as a result of the competitive, CDBG discretionary competitive process targeting youth. This is a, this $150,000 leveraged a $600,000 project in replacing the Splash Park. And the same, at the same time, Five Rivers has done an amazing job of raising money to replace the playground. So, this is, this is a million-and-a-half-dollar project that will take place at Island Metro Park, which, you know, is heavily used by our community. So, I'm really excited to bring this investment forward. Item number nine is a service agreement with Preschool Promise, Inc. This is payment for the next eight years that was established in issue six. Important to note that there were no inflationary increases from the first eight years of funding. So, I know that Robin Lightcap and her team will work feverishly and creatively to provide the great services and support to our three- and four-year-olds, even though they're getting, you know, the same amount of money they got over the last eight years. Items 11 through 17 are our five-year, regular five-year agreements with our rental car companies at the airport. It's both the lease for the counter space, as well as the service center that they all operate at the airport. So, I'm excited to continue to bring those, and we had all of our rental car companies sign, renew, and sign back up. Item D19 is a, an agreement with the Dayton Miami Valley Entrepreneur Center. This is a development agreement that provides critical support for our small entrepreneurs and small businesses. They provide workshops and events that support those companies. They do, they are doing partnering with Greater Dayton, West Dayton Incubator. They provide training and technical business assistance, those wraparound services that help support businesses to grow in size, or to address challenges they may be having, or to expand, you know, from an entrepreneurial activity happening in their home or their garage to, you know, the next level. And as well as providing access to mentors, advisors, investors, the SBDC, Small Business Development Center, is also critical in this work, and they have had a 27% increase from, in 2024 from 2023. So, you know, we've been working for about 10 years, really building this ecosystem that supports our entrepreneurs and our small businesses, and I think that this is showing that that work is paying off. New to 2024 is the, you might recall, the Arcade Development Agreement. One of the community benefits was making sure that all of those resources and services in the arcade were taken out into neighborhood centers or neighborhood, so that our entrepreneurs in the neighborhood, who may not have relationships downtown, would be able to have access and develop relationships, and then the hope is that they would continue to thrive using, advancing their, their companies using the resources of the Entrepreneur Center. So, that is coming live this year, in 2025, because there was a coordinator that the NCA helped pay for. They're providing oversight to this coordinator to make sure, and working in conjunction with the city, to make sure they're, they've got the touchpoints in the right places and, and the engagement is around that. So, excited to continue to see this advancement. So, because of that, oh, and I should say one more thing, we also are reassessing, reevaluating, looking at our small business strategy comprehensively. We've had a number of things come online or coming online, like with Ibrok, with, you know, we now have Urban League back doing a lot of good work. We've got the things that I already talked about at the Arcade. We want to, we want to make sure that for our economic development team is, has a comprehensive small business strategy that we are, that's, you know, thoughtful, data-driven, and, and can really provide direction. And so, that is added to the 2025 contract. So, this contract is $20,000 more than it was last year to help build some of that strategy. So, just wanted to let you know that. And then, another really exciting investment gearing up to come before you today is, is not a, a vote, but the legislation supporting the tax increment financing and the community revitalization agreement is before you for first reading. This is for the On Main Project. Really excited to see, after five years of, you know, starts and stops, that we are moving forward, and grateful for Premier and UD's leadership and partnership in this incredible project. You know, it's not often that we have 34 acres in our downtown that can be developed from the ground up. And so, next week, you will have your second reading of this legislation and the development agreement that outlines our participation in the Phase 1, $120 million project. So, we're really excited to, to be bringing this before you today. The last thing I'd like to do is call forward, oh, I also want to mention, On, On Main will have a presentation to overview and highlight next week at the commission meeting prior to your vote. And then, finally, emergency ordinance number 32134-24 is our first reading, amending the city's appropriations for the year 2024. I'll remind you that the, the revised appropriation comes before you as an emergency, so that it can take effect immediately after the second reading, which will be next week. That is important, obviously, because, as we've talked about before, it takes a couple of weeks for us to get the infrastructure in place, to roll right away with January 1 with operations payroll and, and whatnot. The original appropriation, as well as the revised appropriations, which occur throughout the year, better support department operational needs, and those in the, you know, in previous in the year are passed as non-emergencies. Also, while we work hard to project and model, you know, clearly, you know, things happen that we, we don't anticipate, or they, the way we anticipate them, they don't come to fruition. So having better data at the end to make the year in projections allows for operational opportunity to do the transfers out. Ms. Jones will highlight for you, there are a number of capital investments being recommended in this appropriation because next year is not a debt year. So we have a much leaner capital budget to provide that really critical capital equipment and facilities improvement. And so typically, you will see on those non-debt years, we try to pay forward so that the debt, the, the, the non-debt, the general fund capital money next year goes a little further, has a greater impact, right? So I'll call forward our Director of Management and Budget, Abby Jones, to walk us through the appropriation in more detail.
Good morning.
Thank you, City Manager. Good morning, Mayor, Commissioner, City Manager, and Clerk. As the City Manager mentioned before you today, this morning is the final revised appropriation for year 2024. We have a couple of slides that we will go through displaying the detailed changes in the final revised appropriation. I am going to provide a high-level summary and walk you through some of those changes. The third in the final revised appropriation is 75.2 million, or 7.7% higher than the original, and 6.9 million, or 0.7% higher than the second revised appropriation. So to provide a more concise breakdown, starting with the general fund is what you see on the screen here. It has a net increase of $5 million, reflecting strong budget management across the organization, and better-than-expected revenue performance. As the City Manager mentioned, because of this, it has provided us the opportunity to fund key strategic investments, which we will discuss in detail shortly. Starting at the top, personnel cost across all departments has a net decrease of $2.6 million. And as you've heard throughout the year, staffing has been a challenge, so there has been significant vacancy savings. However, these savings are offset by a needed increase for the Police Department for the back pay. As you know, the Police contract was finalized recently, and so the adjustment to the budget, budget are reflected in this final revised appropriation. Also, there's an increase for the overtime cost in the Fire Department, which is largely associated with the extra engine that's being cross-staffed this year. Next, we have the IT Department. It is transferring $30,000 to capital fund for professional services that are related to the SLA Citizen Access Portal, which is planning to launch in 2025. Police and Fire are collectively increasing $430,000 in contracts and material. This is largely associated with the additional costs that we're incurring this year for fleet repairs and fuel expenses. So this will fund the remainder of the year for both of those departments. And the remaining items on this slide includes proposed use of $7.2 million, intended to address the capital improvements and operational needs related to aging fleet, supply chain delays, ongoing cost increases specifically in Police, Fire, Public Works, PND, and IT. Funding these investments, as the City Manager mentioned, now will provide operational efficiency and minimize some of those financial strain in the future. So I will walk you through those $7.2 million worth of transfers, starting with the $2.4 million. It is to fund additional demolition. Over the next three years, this funding will be leveraging the Ohio Department of Development grant funding, which is received by the Montgomery County Land Bank. $500,000 is for thoroughfare and residential resurfacing. This is to continue the work towards improving our road condition, addressing the quality to enhance resident satisfaction. $500,000 are reserved for future capital investments, ensuring readiness to capitalize on strategic opportunities as they come along, and long-term improvements. $300,000 are providing funding for the paramedic training program through the end of 2025. This funding supports the needed training for essential personnel. And the next four items totaling 1.8 million are providing funding to replace end-of-life capital equipment for Fire and Public Works. These investments were requested for 2025, but as the City Manager mentioned, because 2025 is not a debt year, there was limited funding, therefore, they were not able to receive the needed funding, and were deferred. But now that we have this additional funding at the end of the year, we're allocating these funds so that we ensure essential equipment is replaced in a timely manner to maintain operational efficiency and support critical services. 1.4 million is for replacement of 17 police cruisers. While these vehicles are scheduled for replacement in 2026, this funding will enable us to place an advanced order, helping to mitigate the supply chain delays that, as an organization, we have experienced in the last few years. $300,000 is providing additional funding for replacement of out-of-warranty and non-Windows 11-compatible computers. And lastly, there is a $2.5 million to fund improvements to the Center City Building. To support this, we are reducing the transfer out to the capital and increasing the transfer out to the Development Fund. The original planned capital improvements will now be funded using prior-year unspent capital allocation, ensuring there is no need for additional budget while providing funding for this important investment. And of course, all of these investments, you will have another opportunity to approve as the project agreements are executed and the purchase orders are finalized. They will come before you for approval. For all of the other funds, the increase of 4.9 million in special project funds includes a budget increase for transfer for the Center City and demolition, as discussed earlier. Similar to Police and Fire, Street Maintenance Fund is also needing an increase of $100,000 to cover the fuel and fleet repair costs through the end of the year. 4.5 million expenditure-budgeted increase for the general capital is largely providing funding for the various capital improvement and investment that I just talked through for the Police, Fire, and Public Work Department. The increase is offset by a decrease of 5.3 million for projects including the dock improvements, one-stop fitness center build, and fleet ventilation system upgrade. These projects have been funded in 2025 budget and are scheduled to be completed in 2025, or at least get started in 2025. General capital also includes an increase of 3 million to fund a comprehensive golf improvement plan, which is funded with proceeds from the debt funding. And finally, there is a $5.3 million transfer out decrease in the Internal Service Fund, which is related to the three items that I just mentioned a little while ago. And that is the extent of the $6.9 million increase to the final revised appropriation. Any questions?
Okay, thank you very much. You know, first, before the Commissioners go through their questions, do we have any citizens who are registered to speak on counted items, Ms. Blackshear?
No, not counted items.
On counted items, okay. Commissioners, first starting with Commissioner Turner-Sloss, have any questions or comments? And so this is the first reading, and of course, we have a second reading next week. And of course, all of us will have additional time this week if we have any other questions that we need the City Manager or staff to respond to. So, Commissioner Turner-Sloss?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Patel, Jones, and Ms. Dixon. I appreciate the, the high-level overview this morning, the details. I don't have any questions at this moment, but as the Mayor has already stated, we will have additional time to review. So if I do have any questions, I'll be sure to assure that with you, as well as Ms. Dixon. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Fairchild?
No, I'm good at this moment.
Okay. Commissioner Shaw?
I'm good also.
Good?
Joseph? Thank you.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. So Commissioners, do we have any questions on any other items on the City Manager's recommendations?
Yes.
No? Okay. I accept the motion then to approve the City Manager's recommendations.
I move to approve the City Manager's recommendations.
Second motion.
Okay, it's been properly moved and seconded to approve the City Manager's recommendations. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Okay. Let's listen, Ms. Blackshear.
First reading, emergency ordinance number 32133-24, to reassign special assessments previously leveled for certain public improvements on parcel R72167010085 to parcel R72167010022, located within the city of Dayton, Ohio, in cooperation with the Dayton Regional Energy Special Improvement District, Dayton Phoenix Project, and declaring an emergency.
Having been declared an emergency, I move for the immediate passage of ordinance number 32133-24.
Second, Your Honor.
Okay, it's been properly moved and seconded to have ordinance number 32133-24 declare an emergency. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no.
Second reading, emergency ordinance number 32133-24, to reassign special assessments previously leveled for certain public improvements on parcel R72167010085 to parcel R72167010022, located within the city of Dayton, Ohio, in cooperation with the Dayton Regional Energy Special Improvement District, Dayton Phoenix Project. Mayor Memms?
Aye.
Commissioner Joseph?
Aye.
Shaw?
Aye.
Fairchild?
Aye.
Turner-Sloss?
Aye.
First reading, emergency ordinance number 32134-24, amending the city's appropriations for the year 2024 and declaring an emergency.
Your Honor, being declared an emergency, I move for the immediate passage of emergency ordinance number 32134-24.
Second motion, Your Honor.
Okay, it's been properly moved and seconded to have ordinance number 32134-24 as an emergency. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Thank you.
Second reading, ordinance number 32129-24, authorizing the City Manager to purchase fuel necessary to maintain operations for 2025 through 2035. Mayor Memms?
Aye.
Commissioner Joseph?
Aye.
Shaw?
Aye.
Fairchild?
Aye.
Turner-Sloss?
Aye.
First reading, emergency resolution number 6841-24, approving a Title VI plan and community participation plan for the James M. Cox Dayton International Airport and declaring an emergency.
Your Honor, emergency resolution number 6841-24 being declared an emergency, I move for its immediate passage.
Second, Your Honor.
Okay, it's been properly moved and seconded to have ordinance number 6841-24 declare an emergency. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Thank you.
Second reading, emergency resolution number 6841-24, approving a Title VI plan and community participation plan for the James M. Cox Dayton International Airport. Mayor Memms?
Aye.
Commissioner Joseph?
Aye.
Shaw?
Aye.
Fairchild?
Aye.
Turner-Sloss?
Aye.
First reading, ordinance number 32135-24, approving, I'm sorry, providing for the termination of a tax increment financing exemption previously authorized by the Commission by amending ordinance number 31571-17, passed on June 28, 2027, under the authority of the Ohio Revised Code Sections 5709.40 through 5709.43, and Section 6 of House, Ohio House Bill 384, enacted by the 131st Ohio General Assembly, effective April 5, 2017. First reading, ordinance number 32136-24, declaring the improvement of certain real property located in the city of Dayton, Ohio, to be a public purpose in connection with the authorization of a tax increment financing exemption pursuant to Ohio Revised Code Section 5709.41, declaring such property to be exempt from real property taxation, designating public infrastructure improvements and private improvements for urban redevelopment purposes, requiring the landowner and building owners thereof to make applicable service payments in lieu of taxes, establishing an urban redevelopment tax increment equivalent fund for the deposit of such TIF service payments, and authorizing a school compensation agreement with the Dayton Public Schools, together with related authorizations. First reading, ordinance number 32137-24, authorizing the City Manager to enter into a master community reinvestment area agreement with Fairgrounds Redevelopment Limited for real property located within the Midtown/Caroline Community Reinvestment Area pursuant to Ohio Revised Code Section 3735.671, and authorizing the City Manager to enter into supplemental community reinvestment area agreements upon the satisfaction of certain conditions, together with related authorizations. Second reading, ordinance number 32130-24, revising the fee schedule for City Plan Board and Board of Zoning Appeal applications, and repealing ordinance number 30712-08. Mayor Memms?
Aye.
Commissioner Joseph?
Aye.
Shaw?
Aye.
Fairchild?
Aye.
Turner-Sloss?
Aye.
Second reading, ordinance number 32131-24, amending the official zoning map to change the zoning of approximately 42 acres at the southwest corner of North Keewee Street and East Alina Street from eclectic multifamily EMF to open space OS. Mayor Memms?
Aye.
Commissioner Joseph?
Aye.
Shaw?
Aye.
Fairchild?
Aye.
Turner-Sloss?
Aye.
That is all we have, Your Honor.
Okay, thank you very much. So Ms. Blackshear, do we have any citizens who are registered to speak?
Your Honor, four citizens have registered to speak. I would like to state that there is a three-minute time limit. As you address the commission, we ask that you state your name and address for the record. At that time, I will turn on a green light. When the green light comes on, you will have three minutes to speak. After you have spoken two and a half minutes, a yellow light will come on. You will have 30 seconds remaining to speak. When the red light comes on, you will be asked to cease your comments and to take your seat. To the audience in attendance, please be mindful, this is a business meeting, and we kindly request that during this portion of the meeting, you refrain from any hand-clapping, finger-snapping, and conversations that will prevent the City Commission from hearing the Speaker's comments. I call to the podium Christopher Lockett.
Great day.
Name and address for the record.
Christopher Lockett, 100 North James H. McGee Boulevard, Dayton, Ohio, 45402.
May begin.
Evening.
Great day. So I just came out today. I ain't gonna, you know, be all rah-rah with y'all. I really can't. I really came to extend my gratitude to you all, Mayor Memes, Shaw, Fairchild, Commissioner Turner-Sloss, because just seeing, I can't remember a time me growing up and seeing politicians in the neighborhood like I see y'all there, and despite judgment or negative things that people may say at times about you all, I mean, I go through it too. People talk about me like a dog, so it don't mean nothing to my character though, and who I feel like I am and who I know God believes me to be, so I say that to say, to see y'all in the neighborhoods, in the community in Dayton, especially where I come from on the West Side, it's like, that's half the battle right there, 'cause now you amongst people like me, and I can't recall times I've seen politicians out like that. Now maybe I'm just green and new to this, but I'm just being honest, I just don't recall it, right? I tell the story about me and my kids seeing you, Fairchild, out probably 6:30 a.m. on Broadway exercising. Blew my mind, for real. That blew my mind. I say this, I'm gonna number read from my phone with this, I speak for myself when I say that I'm a product of the problems in Dayton, and now I formed a grassroots program going by Official Network and Chill that can absolutely be an asset to Dayton in regards to healing and solving problems. With you all being in the community, the way you are, you get to reach and touch people like me and like my organization, and we can take problems off of you all's hands that you probably may not be able to reach coming from the space that you're sitting in, right? But we out there, we the foot soldiers for the problems, for the solutions to the problems that you all may want to solve. So I just want to make sure we make that clear. I heard Shelley, she was basically going over, you know, funding and talking about the entrepreneur programs and things that's going on in Dayton. Well, we here, look no further, don't overlook us, know that we're here. Official Network and Chill, we here to help, okay? Appreciate y'all.
Appreciate you.
Thank you, Mr. Lockett. Name and address for the record.
Keith Lander, 429 South Kilmer, Dayton.
Morning.
Yeah, morning, Mr. Mayor. And all of the, full disclosure, Mr. Mayor was a teacher in high school, and he still has his hair, and look at me, something's wrong. But anyway, for the rest, I think last week y'all entered into a contract or agreement with a company to come in and help out, reduce some of this, help reduce some of the crime that we experience in here in Dayton, you know, and I applaud the efforts, I'm all the above approach is what we need. But, you know, it seems like every time there is an issue with crime and there's something pop up in the city of Dayton, we always tend to say we need a program. I think we got enough programs. The young man just spoke here about a program that he has. I think we got programs on top of programs on top of programs, right? And I think we need to stop making these subtle excuses for these people participating in this crime and call it what it is. It's a crime, you know, we can probably reduce it, and I know there's been a lot of talk about youth crime, that's probably less than 1%. These people are adults who are out there shooting and killing and acting fool, right? So we need to call that out. We can't allow these people to make our city look like it's crime-infested, because it's not really. I mean, we have shootings, the shootings are from people who are friends or acquaintances of one another. This is not a random act where folks run up on somebody walking down the street and gun them down, you know, so we gotta put this thing in perspective, you know, and basically you need to give the resources to law enforcement to do everything they can apprehend the perpetrators of such crime. I think that'd be a step in the right direction and also utilize what we got already here. I've been to town hall meetings, I've been to marches, I've been to protests, and I've been there with some of y'all, you know what I mean, walking side by side, but I'm thinking, let's stop repeating doing what we always done and then getting what we always got. Let's try to turn the page and do something different, which is, no more excuses for these people making crime in this city, you know what I mean? So I would like to see, if possible, the next crime, I'd like to see the prosecutor MacHatt, I'd like to see the chief of police, I'd like to see them at a press conference saying what they're doing and what they gonna do when they catch these people, all right? So I'm tired of the town halls, we've been there, done that, I've seen the same people at the same town halls. The folks out there slinging bullets around, they're not coming to a town hall. We need to find a way to reach those folks, so I thank you for your efforts.
Thank you.
No, thank you for your comments.
You name and address for the record.
Yeah, Matthew Hobbs, 126 Mart Avenue.
May begin.
Good morning.
Good morning. I'm very pleased to participate in the commission meeting with the honorable city stewards in attendance here today. My name is Matthew Hobbs, I'm a local parking professional who has had the pleasure in conducting business with the region's hospital networks and universities in the immediate area. I represent the nation's largest parking services provider called Metropolis. I began my career at Sinclair Community College and have experience in every aspect of parking management, whether it be installing AI-powered robust parking equipment or training operational teams to keep it faithfully running 24/7, climbing mountains of snow and line-striping swaths of asphalt as far as the eye could see. We currently are the chosen parking provider for Kettering Health Network and Premier Health. We are currently operating from the hub of the Dayton Arcade. Over the past few years, I had the esteemed satisfaction of being involved with the downtown Dayton Partnership and the Dayton Chamber of Commerce. This isn't a humble brag, I love the city of Dayton, I love the history, love the music, the people, the richness of humanity present in every nook and cranny of our fair city. It's been rather good to me and to those whom I love. With that being said, I've come to the conclusion it's time to give back in a meaningful way, utilizing my experience and expertise. I'd like to offer our support in improving parking services under the city's purview. We are currently possessing the most technologically advanced solution to create an optimal environment, not only maximize value for the city's parking facilities, but create a more approachable and friendly environment to the downtown recreating and living, starting with the first experience one has entering and exiting their journey to our great urban center. I look forward to the opportunity to meet with you and the prospect of developing a meaningful relationship with gratitude.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Hobbs.
Thanks, sir. Appreciate your comments.
Hello, Mayor and City Council.
Morning.
Morning. David Woods, 3230 Lakeview Avenue. Okay, I'm complaining again about Kettering Hospital and Chief of Police. Basically, I went to the city commission meeting with Inglewood yesterday, and I told her that Chief Police said that Sergeant Corfola said that I never did make a threat towards Kettering Hospital. Mike Lang, who retired from Kettering, Inglewood Police, he said I never did make a threat towards Kettering Hospital. So I told her that I want them to sue Kettering Hospital, I already sued them now, but I told him I want them to sue them and I'll be a witness for them, because Captain Perez of Ketterman Campus Hospital said I made a threat towards them, he said that Chief of Police Sergeant Corfola said it, and the Chief Police said he never did say that. But the Chief of Police don't want, still don't want to cooperate and tell them that. And I told them that they can sue them and use that money to help the community of Inglewood as far as, you know, the elderly people there, and they can put money for the budgets out there, but he don't want to cooperate. They had attorney there, so they talk about, oh, well, we can't make them do it, so I hope that he do it. So I urge the public watching this to call the Chief of Police Sergeant Corfola and tell him, will he go ahead and cooperate with the mayor and city council, and he can go ahead and tell them what he told me that he never did make a threat towards, I never did make a threat towards the doctor nurses and Captain Perez, and they were lying, so they can go ahead and sue them, and I'll be their witness for it too. The Civil Rights Commission, Christina McDonald's doing a fantastic job, I appreciate what she's doing, she got a lot of this strength care, and also I would ask the public to go ahead and call Captain Perez since that nurse choked, that male nurse choked my dad in the throat, cause we get critical with affection, ask him to go ahead and arrest that police, that nurses in that hospital, and call the CEO of Kettering Hospital and tell him to go ahead and get that nurse out of hospital. And also I would like the public to call the doctors, I'm gonna say their names, who has not notified me to this day that my dad is dead, because I have not seen his dead Doctor Nichols-Broggen killed my dad, gave affection and murdered him, he's not told me my dad is dead on this earth yet. Seba Ambalala killed my dad and murdered him, and still today has not told me my dad is dead on this earth. New Ash McCall has not told me my dad is dead, killed him, and I said they killed him because I was main partner in medical, they made decisions without letting me know, and that was illegal.
Lamont Mahendra Shah.
Mahamir Shah, still has not told me that my dad is dead, and they killed him, murdered him because I'm his main partner in medical, you gotta come to me. You can't make, you gotta do, if you do hospital, then you still gotta come to me, they didn't do that, and they killed him, and the crooked cops that lie.
Scott Chandler.
And Scott Chandler from the Kettering Police, talking about, Captain Perez said I made a threat towards them, and he said he didn't. So the Chief of Police said I didn't do it, and they said that's the reason why I got trespass, I got trespass illegally, but I appreciate y'all, and also.
Hey, for your comments.
Thank you.
Appreciate you.
Thank you, Mr. Woods.
That is all, Your Honor.
Okay, thank you very much. Ms. Dixteen, any closing comments?
I have none, Your Honor.
Okay. Ms. Blackshear, any closing comments?
I have none, Your Honor.
Okay, commissioners, any closing comments? Commissioner Turner-Sloss, any closing comments?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. I would just like to highlight very briefly, thank you, Ms. Dixteen, for your comments in regards to this week's calendar items. Just wanted to highlight calendar item number two, as mentioned, is additional funding to remove the fire piles, and from the last Dayton Recovery Plan demolition monthly update, actually it was back in October, but we were right around 85, and with this contract, we're now reducing down to 50. Hopefully and prayerfully, we will have more offline and that there will not be any more that will come online, so I'm glad to see that we are definitely making progress with the fire pile removals. And so I just wanted to acknowledge our planning in Neighborhood and Development Department as well as our Public Works Department. And thank you to all of the recipients, thank you to the Klein family for their commitment, and again to Grandpa Lucky Joe's commitment in his service, and just wanted to congratulate all 10 recipients for their continued support and leadership to the city of Dayton and the service that they provide for all of the residents. Thank you to all of the residents that came out that spoke this morning. Mr. Lockett, it's good to see you, sir. Thank you very much for your comments. It really truly means a lot that you recognize that we are out in the community, that we are in fact being seen, but I will be remiss if I did not note that we stand on shoulders those that came before us, that paved the way, from Commissioner Dean Lovelace, who was constantly out in the community, Commissioner, my mentor, Adothi Boosie Neal, Mayor Michael Turner, Mayor Clay Dixon, and the former mayor as well, Ryan McLenn, the list goes on, a number of people definitely paved the way, and again, that really were in fact the epitome of public servants. So again, thank you. I would encourage you, as you mentioned and you highlighted Ms. Dixteen's comments as it relates to the Entrepreneur Center, I would encourage you, if you haven't already done so, to have that conversation with the city, the Entrepreneur Center, excuse me, in regards to your organization, to see if there's some support and some guidance that could be provided to you for the service, to extend the services that you're committing to provide to our community as we are dealing with a number of challenges, issues, as well as making way for a number of great things that are transpiring in our community. Mr. Lander, thank you for raising your comments, and your points are valid. There are a number of efforts and programming that we are looking at, and there are some that are existing, and you're right, there are a number of things we gotta call a spade, a spade, right? In regards to, there are some individuals who are partaking in illicit behavior and criminal activity. In our police department, they're rolling up their sleeves, they're looking at various means in terms of the recruitment and advancement of technology, there are a number of things that are transpiring to address the issues. And then I just want to know, I believe we have it on our calendar here soon, the teen center for the Northwest Recreation Center will be opening up very soon, so those are additional programming and services that we're providing to our youth, as well as conversations that we have been having ongoing, the work of the mayor, Mr. Beckham, and the entire commission as it relates to the Cure of Violence Initiative, and I know Commissioner Fairchild raised this probably about two, three years ago, and so now we're rolling up our sleeves and we're moving forward in that regard of addressing the issues in our community. Mr. Hobbs, thank you for being here, thank you for your comments. I would encourage you, if you haven't already done so, to have a conversation with the city administration, Ms. Dixteen, or the deputy city managers, Ms. Lofton or Mr. Palet, to extend your courtesy and your expertise as it relates to parking, so thank you for being here. Mr. Woods, I continue condolences to you and your family, and I would encourage you to continue your efforts. I know that you are seeking counsel, you have an attorney that is working with you, so again, I would encourage you to continue, to encourage you to stay on that path. The last thing that I would like to mention is that it has been brought to my attention as well as the entire body, the commission, that there has been an insurgence of hate flyers that have been disseminated throughout the city of Dayton, and particularly in East Dayton, which and will remain, you all know that the city of Dayton, under your leadership, Commissioner Joseph, we are in fact an immigrant-friendly community in which we strive to be friendly to all of those who choose to live, work, and play and do business in the city of Dayton. And so with that, we know that immigrants have been an intricate component of our society, and hateful rhetoric would not be tolerated. And so with that all being said, the flyers and further investigation is ongoing, and the authorities are now looking into where in fact these flyers have been reproduced or where in fact they have been circulated throughout our community. So I would just like to thank all of the residents who have brought this to our attentions through the email, social media posts, Ms. Jackson as well, to her staff for bringing this to our attention. And last thing I want to mention very briefly, and I apologize, Ms. McLendon, thank you for all of your efforts for the United Way campaign, you did a bang-up job. I just want to commend you as well as the entire city of Dayton staff, the whole entire administration, they rolled up their sleeves, and I believe we met our goal, and so I just wanted to thank you, Ms. McLendon, for all of your efforts and your leadership, and to the entire commission office, to the entire staff. That's all I have, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Commissioner Fairchild.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner, for all those comments. I won't rehearse them. Madam City Manager, I didn't know if it would be possible from Ms. Baker to get the nominations of our 31 employees for the Klein Award. I would find that enlightening, particularly given the fact that we have two weeks off coming up, that we'd have some time to read through those nominations. I think it's pretty remarkable, the breadth and depth of this organization in terms of service, and beyond the 10, I think recognizing all 31 nominees would be awesome, or at least to be able to be more aware of them and the contributions they've made. And I would just add to Commissioner Turner-Sloss, when I was a young person, it was Dick Zimmer and.
Abner Oreg.
And Abner Oreg over on the east end who are out in the community quite a bit, so there's a, there is a legacy of public servants in the commission and in the neighborhood. Just want to broaden people's remembering their legacy, of people who have sat here before us. And then finally, if you don't have your tickets, the Dayton Ballet will be performing the Nutcracker, and the world's best 14-year-old ballerina will be performing in half of those performances, and I'm looking forward to seeing her dance.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Shaw.
Yeah, just very quickly, I want to make sure that everyone knows about holidays at the arcade today from 3:00 to 8:00. It's a great opportunity to support 50 local vendors, our small businesses, and celebrate the holiday season. This year, they're also donating or having a food drive for the food bank, so I just encourage everyone to come out and support our local businesses, shop local, and bring donations to support the community. And as always, there are applications available at the city commission office for the AFL-CIO Building Trades Apprenticeship Program.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Joseph.
I want to thank all my colleagues for their excellent comments. Commissioner said I'm not going to say them again, I just have one thing to add, and that is thank you to all of you and all the residents that showed up for the downtown Belmont tree lighting Sunday, it was very nice, people showed up. If you haven't gone past the corner of Smithville and Waterfleet in the evening, go drive by, there's a nice light display, a nice lighted Christmas tree. I want to thank everybody that contributed to that, so thank you. lighted Christmas tree, I want to thank everybody that contributed to that, so thank you.
Okay, thank you. Just a couple comments. First of all, the individuals who spoke today, thank you so much, Mr. Landon, also, Mr. Lockett, for your work that you do in the community on a continuous basis, so it's very much appreciated as well. All of us, of course, are out there in the community, it's part of the task, and we signed up for it, and we are happy to be able to do that. I want to add, on a sad note, but appreciative, from Prosecutor Matt Heck, and the program, the memorial service that he performs every year, in terms of recognizing those who have lost their lives because of homicides, and the program they has every year, where he invites the family, and they have opportunity to place an ornament on the tree, and also have additional time to talk with others during that ceremony. Attended this past, I'm not sure which day it was, it may have been Thursday, it may have been Wednesday, Tuesday, I'm sorry, but the aspect of seeing and hearing some individuals, and of course, the pain that they share, and also being able to talk to some of them as I was able to do sometime during the course of the year, and it's not that we forget, but it's just a reminder that the work that we're trying to do to minimize the violence that we have in our community is so, so, so very important, and it's something that we'll continue to work on to the best of our ability, even though we have, may have a bump or two in the road as we go through the process, the aspect of trying to create peace in this community is far, far more important than some of the hurdles that we will have to go over. So, I just wanted to make sure I said that this morning, to let everybody know just how much we appreciate the work that you have done in terms of this effort, and then the work that you will do. So, again, we'll say love and peace for all, and hatred for none, and thank you for attending this morning's meeting. For the business, this meeting is adjourned.